We'll call this work session Monday, October 4th to order. Imocation given by Ms. Tolliver and the Pledge of Allegiance by myself.
May we bow our heads? Heavenly Father, you are the builder of all things. Please guide us in this meeting. I pray that we seek you for an advice. Let us not make decisions based upon what we know, but let us act based upon your wisdom. We place this meeting and our city in your hands. We place our hearts and our minds in your hands so that we, so that you may direct us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda tonight is Ms. Petty with the update from the Heritage Center.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Petty, the Director of the Scottsboro Jackson Heritage Center. I'm here again and excited to tell you all that we have started moving into the new exhibit center in preparation for our opening in two weeks. I also want to let you know about all of the progress going on at the Heritage Center, including public accessibility, organization, and research expansion. Most of the exhibits from upstairs in the Brown Proctor House have been moved into the exhibit center and are now all handicap accessible. These include exhibits of pictures and artifacts from Scottsboro and Jackson County's historic past. The movement of exhibits and furniture has allowed for planned reorganization of the Brown Proctor House. The Walter B Hammer Family Research Library will be modified as an old classic library where I will have my desk readily, to readily greet guests as they come in. In addition, movement has created an opportunity for the center's library to have a research room annex. This is in conjunction with an offer for the works of some Jackson County historians to be housed at the center. We are hopeful for other collections as well. Employees of the center, along with volunteers, will index these collections to make them easily accessible to the public for research. Returning to the new exhibit center, we are planning more exhibits and other upgrades to the facilities, including Sagetown, so that we can showcase the rich history of Scottsboro and Jackson County. We are excited about these future events. In closing, I would like to invite you all to the opening of the new exhibit center. It is taking place Sunday, October 17th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Lot refreshments will be served. Thank you, and I hope to see you all on October 17th.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Branch from Nexite.
Good evening. Chuck Branch with Nexite. Appreciate the opportunity to join you. Ms. Tolliver, Mayor, gentlemen. Wanted to give you a brief update on what we've done, how we do it, talk a little bit of what we might be able to do in the future. So if you want to turn around and take a look at the screen, and if you have a question that comes up while we're going through this, do not hesitate to interrupt me. So Nexite has had the good fortune of working with the city of Scottsboro for the past four-plus years. We've had some success. I think it's a good time for us to get in front of you and sort of walk you through our process, some of the unique things that we do from an analytics standpoint, some of which, as I discussed them, I think can be of benefit to Katie and her efforts in the downtown area to support your existing businesses and any entrepreneurial efforts. But real quick, the team that helps me as we work with the city of Scottsboro, not my complete team, but the primary people that assist me are Peter Sob, who does a lot of the client engagement and client management work for our Scottsboro engagement. Ashton Cushing heads up the marketing department. She's responsible for putting together marketing materials and working with me on reaching out to different developers, tenant reps, and end-users. Tyler Days, the Director of our Location and Business Intelligence, which is a fancy way, he runs our research department. And then Tyler has a couple of other people that work with him, and Ashton has an assistant that works with her. So on a daily basis, we've got six people plus myself that are involved in working on our Scottsboro efforts. So I don't know that each of you's ever had a real good idea of all the things that we do when we're working for a community. So when we get engaged, and what we've done for the past four years starts at 1:00 on this screen where it says consumer travel patterns. So we are fortunate to work with a partner who anonymously tracks people's mobile devices. And so by tracking those mobile devices, and again, they're anonymous, I don't know that it's Rick Roden's cellphone, and I don't know where he lives, and I don't know his telephone number, but by pinging that device, I can tell you who's shopping where, where were they before they went to that location, and where did they go afterwards. And I'm going to show you a couple of examples in just a moment. But being able to do that allows us to then create some very unique custom trade areas. So in what we do in commercial development, particularly on the retail side, what used to be simple radius and drive time analysis is now done primarily by custom trade area. And when we show you some of the outputs in just a moment, you'll get an idea of how large the Scottsboro custom trade area is and how far you're drawing people into your market. With that, then, once we've identified the trade area, we can then start looking at some very unique quarterly updated demographic information. As a growing community, we're able to capture those household and population growth numbers more quickly. We're looking at segmentation data, which means 65 different groups of how many retirees, how many young couples with children, how many millennials. And so we're able to identify consumers by the types of concepts they visit. We're going to look at leakage and gap analysis, again, dollars that are leaving your market and going elsewhere. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the number one goal is keeping those dollars in your market so that you're generating that sales tax revenue. We started doing something very unique years ago, and it's called peer analysis. Basically, we're identifying communities that look like Scottsboro from a demographic standpoint. But then we take it to the next layer, and that's overlaid avoid analysis. So we take the 200-plus to 250-plus most rapidly expanding concepts in the southeast, and then when we look at those peers, we can show the ones that have shown a propensity to locate in markets like Scottsboro. So part of our process with Starbucks was identifying that Starbucks was going to similar communities and then making the argument that Scottsboro was ready for a Starbucks. We identify the development targets. We map all of the existing retail. We map available properties. We put together the marketing materials. We go to upwards of 12 ICSC conferences on an annual basis representing the city of Scottsboro, and I'm assuming everybody knows what ICSC is, International Council of Shopping Centers. COVID sort of put a delay in that process, but we go to the first one in Vegas, the first weekend in December to restart conference representation. And then we spend the balance of our time reaching out to the developers, tenant reps, and retail concepts that have shown an interest in the market, get them the analytics, connect them to Rick if they're coming into the market. In some cases, in the past, we've connected them to Rick and the mayor, particularly a hotel developer that we're working with. And at the end of the day, it's about connecting the dots. I'm not a broker. I'm not a developer. I'm simply engaging with those people that can bring new commercial development to your market. So this is an example. This is your Walmart. So we're able to visualize, and the red dots are those people who are visiting more frequently, and the blue dots are the ones that are visiting less frequently, and you've got some in between. But this is us capturing all of that data of the mobile devices of people who are coming to your Walmart, and you can see how much larger that area is than just simply the city boundary or a 10-mile radius. We're able to do that by looking at the home location of that device and also the work location. So we're able to track their movements and where they're going, not only from coming their home, but also if they're leaving work and stopping by the Walmart. These are some interesting stats I thought you might like to see and be interested in. Your Walmart in the last 12 months has received over 200,000 unique visitors. Those visitors have visited that particular store a total of 2.1 million times. And so the average visitor is going about 11 times. What's really interesting is you go to the second part of that chart, I took it and I said, "All right, tell me how many people go 12 times." So you get 2.1 million visitors of those unique ones. You still get 1.25 million of people who have gone to that Walmart 12 times, and your Walmart ranks number 25 out of the 101 Walmarts in the state of Alabama. So you're in the top order percentile from a Walmart traffic standpoint. We can take that data, again, to build that custom trade area, but it's that kind of traffic and being able to prove to some of these retail concepts and grocery stores and other entities that your market is bigger than simply five or 10 miles outside of Scottsboro. You're pulling people all the way from the Tennessee border, you're pulling people from over in Fort Payne, you're pulling people from halfway to Huntsville, and you're pulling people all the way down to the lake border between you and Gunnersville. And so you're pulling in traffic, and that allows us to then tell the story of why other retail concepts should be here. The other thing that's interesting is that 1.25 million is reached by people who go to that Walmart at least 30 times a year. And then if you look at the chart, we can then start tracking. Forty-six percent of those users are coming from their home and going to that Walmart. People who are visiting that Walmart and purchasing goods and services, 68% of them are now going home after they've gone to Walmart. Now you can visualize, this is the zip codes where you're drawing most of your traffic. I've only picked the top seven, but we have the top 30. But again, it confirms that trade area is much larger than simply doing a small radius or drive time analysis. You get about 50% of your traffic to that Walmart from within 10 miles. You get another 40% between 10 miles and 30 miles. Again, we're confirming that a regional trade area is the right way to sell your community. And then we have the ability, and I'm only showing 10 here, but we have the ability to show you the 60 locations, consumers that visited that Walmart. Where were they before they came, and the 60 locations they went to after they left? You have a predominance of restaurants before and after. That becomes part of the story in talking to additional restaurant concepts about why they need to be in your market. People, when they go out to shop, whether it's Walmart or whether it's going to Home Depot or wherever, are going and eating before they go to that location, or they're going to eat after they go to that location. So it's a very good story to tell for why there should be more restaurants in your market. There's the trade area that we've used, it's about 120,000 people. In fact, I think I've got some demographics. Sorry, it's 112,000 growing to 114 over the next five years. Average household income of just north of 58,000. So we have all of this demographic information. We've got segmentation data. This is the number-two segmentation group. Certain retailers are interested in this because it tells them what products and services to offer. We built a software application internally. It allows us to, and let's say that we're trying to recruit, well, we actually used it with Starbucks, I'll use that example. We took every Starbucks in the southeast and built a profile. And then we took and built 5 million of these little hexagon nodes and identified every market in the southeast that provided a void, meaning there was a need for a Starbucks in that market, which led to conversations that we've had in the past with different developers about putting a Starbucks in your market. Biggest thing that we do is recruit. We're on the phone daily talking to developers and tenant reps and the end-user retail concepts about why they should be in your market. I mentioned that we are going to continue to attend these ICSC conferences. Success to date is at the top with Publix Chick-fil-A, Whataburger, which hasn't been announced yet, so if you're with the press, don't run out and announce it, but it is coming. Popeyes, Pet Depots joining the Publix lineup. Food City is in your market because we worked with them down in Albertville, and they needed to have three locations in northeast Alabama for distribution purposes. Starbucks and Title Wave. Below are opportunity targets. Again, if you're with the media, that doesn't mean they're coming, but it means we are talking to them. There are a couple of those concepts that I expect will end up in the Publix development. That's who we are and what we do. So give you an example, I know that there's been some conversation about Publix and what role. So when I started working for your community four years ago, over the first two and a half, three years, we had over a half dozen Publix developers that we work with on projects all across the southeast that we had come up here and drive the market, and many times they met with Rick while they were up here. There were only two potential sites that made sense, the one where Publix is now going, and then the other one was over by the Home Depot and the Walmart. For three years, Tom Renee, who was the real estate manager at Publix, said the market wasn't ready. Three months before they made a decision to come here, Tom Renee was saying they weren't ready. Most of those developers were out of Birmingham, Chattanooga, or the Atlanta area. But at the end of the day, we had provided all of the analytics on why the market needed to have a Publix, and ultimately, Mr. White came up from central Florida, and you've got a new Publix coming to your market. Starbucks is another great example of somebody that we started talking with developers and Starbucks tenant rep who's based out of Mobile about the market going all the way back to ICSC in 2018. And eventually, time becomes right and Starbucks ends up in your market. There are a couple of other concepts that we're talking to right now with the tenant reps that we feel really good about. We've had a tremendous amount of success working down in Albertville with the mayor and Mike Price down there. We're leveraging that to have discussions with some developers about coming up here to do the same type of project. You know, the data is unique, the contacts are unique. We think we've done a pretty doggone good job working for your community, and I'd like to see us be able to continue to work for your community in the next three years. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Branch on this? I guess the only question I would have would be if we were to work with you, let's see, you're more of an incentive-type contract.
What I've always done for the city of Scottsboro, we started off with a very minimal retainer fee. And at the end of that retainer fee, we had an 18-month period. So it was small retainer plus success fee. It's not a commission, I'm not a broker. It's a success fee. What we have suggested to Tanner and in our conversations with Rick, and I'm hoping that he has shared that with you, if not, we'll make sure you get it, but we have suggested that we will waive the retainer fee because we've been involved for the last three and a half, four years, and we will work only on a success fee going forward.
With your company and the research that you do for the city of Scottsboro, you have one contact that comes back. It gets all the information that you've gathered.
Correct. We've, from day one when we engaged with the city of Scottsboro, Rick was designated as our primary contact. I don't care who gets access to the data, he was always the primary contact if we had somebody coming to the market that needed to meet with an economic development official.
I understand that, and I'm not throwing Rick on the bus. What I'm about to say is, I think council as a body that has to do with the knowing the potential sites and the possibility of 772 and licensing and the sewer and electric and everything. Somebody within the council should be a contact.
The more, the better.
I was asked a year and a half into my term on the council, "What about Chuck Branch and Nexite? How are they doing?" Never heard of you. You know, of course, we've had administration change since that time.
Sure. Yep. I have no problem. Y'all, you're the, I guess the CDA is a governing, you're the governing body, the CDA reports to the council, so whomever the council and the CDA want me to report to, I have no problem reporting. Don't come back up here.
I get it that you just need one, you don't need to talk to all of us, but you know.
It wouldn't hurt to have Rick from an economic development standpoint and one from the council that we can share the information with. It's all online, so you can access it. If it's a non-time-sensitive update, we post it online. If it's anything related to, hey, so-and-so tenant rep's coming to the market, or like we did when the gentleman came up here to look at a hotel opportunity out on Goose Pond, we had him meet with Rick and the mayor. So as long as we've got somebody that can coordinate those in-person meetings, I don't mind who has access to the base camp account to see what we're doing, as long as we're all quiet about it.
Oh, sure, sure.
Mr. Branch?
Yes.
How many businesses have you actually brought to Scottsboro?
I mean, have I actually brought?
Four years you've been here.
Well, let's see, Publix is coming. Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, the Pet Depot guys that are going next to Publix, I've worked with them because we had them looking at multiple sites. I can't mention them by name, but the other two tenants that are coming in the Publix development
Right.
are people that we were working on when we first got started and actually had developers talking to Rick about those concepts. And Title Wave is a group that we talked to all of the car wash companies.
So in the past four years, probably 10?
Whatever that number is, seven or eight. It's about $40 million in revenue, so at 3% sales tax, that's about 1.2 million dollars a year in sales tax revenue.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Branch?
That it?
Thank you, sir.
I've got a two-hour drive, y'all don't mind if I leave, do you?
No, sir.
All right. That didn't want to be rude.
Don't forget your laptop.
Thank you, y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions, Rick's got my contact information. I'm more than happy to get on the call.
Yes, sir. Thanks a lot.
Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you.
And three and four, we're going to strike again because neither one showed up again. Unless I'm wrong, and somebody's here, but I'm looking out and I don't see anybody, so we will strike both of those and move straight to five. Number five, discuss city of Scottsboro cost sharing for the Tennessee River Economic Impact Study. Mr. Roden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey. There has never been an economic impact study of Lake Gunnersville. It's probably our number-one asset in Jackson County and Marshall County, and we've never had it. TVA has done some things in the past where they've estimated that the economic impact of Lake Gunnersville is $1 million per shoreline mile, but there's never been anybody that's done anything to this extent. So we got together with Marshall County, with Katie Norton, with the Marshall County Economic Development Authority down there, I mean, not the Tourism Authority down there, to talk about doing a study, and we did some research and found out that Jacksonville State University does studies like this. They do an intense depth. I mean, they dive deep in what all they do. And they looked, showed us some of the things that they've done down in Neely Henry Lake, and it is a deep study. I mean, it's unreal, the detail that they have. I sent a copy of that to the mayor. So we decided to move ahead and to get a study done for the economic impact of Lake Gunnersville. Marshall County kind of jumped ahead of us, and they, their city, the city of Gunnersville is participating at $2,500. Their Marshall County Economic Development Council's $2,500. Marshall County Tourism is doing $2,500. But anyway, the total cost for the study, by the way, is $5,700. So we got to, we're raising half of that. So I reached out to the mayor and to a lot of other entities in Jackson County to see if we could all go together and partner on that cost. As of today, onboard is Goose Pond Colony, the Mountain Lake Chamber of Commerce, the city of Bridgeport, the city of Stevenson, the town of Section. Waiting on word from Nathan with Economic Development, Jackson County Economic Development. Jackson County Commission is onboard. So we've got about six or so partners, somewhere thereabouts, that have agreed that, yeah, we're onboard. We certainly, we love the city of Scottsboro. I reached out to the mayor, and he wanted to get on the session tonight to talk about it. But this study is going to be a very valuable tool for us that we've never had before, to find out just what do fishing tournaments really mean to us, not what do the tournament directors tell us they mean to us. We'll have actual numbers. What is the value of lakefront property? What is the value of an industry coming here that's going to be located on the lake? It's going to have such impactful data that we will be able to use when we recruit retail, when we recruit industry, when we recruit residential, because we'll have actual data that we've never had in the past. So we'll also be able to use this data when you apply, when everyone applies for both federal and state grants that we've never had in the past. So this is, I think, a great partnership that I think is going to provide us with data that's going to be very useful. The study is due out the first week in November. That's the last I've heard, that it's, they've been working on it for months. And again, we're doing it no matter what, but we would certainly love the city of Scottsboro to come onboard as a partner with us.
Anyone having questions?
Again, what was the cost for the city of Scottsboro?
Well...
$5,700 for the total.
$5,700 total cost, we're having to do about half of that. So we're having to do whatever, half, $5,700. But what we're going to do is depending, the total cost, I told the mayor around $2,500, but actually, I've had somebody else come onboard since I talked to the mayor, so it's actually going to be less than that. Now, if y'all want to do $2,500, that's fantastic, but we will divide that out to where each entity, now, the smaller cities are doing 500, I'll tell you that. Bridgeport and Stevenson's doing 500. So the rest of the cost will be divided out between the Chamber, the city, EDA if they're onboard, definitely Goose Pond, and Jackson County Commission. So whatever that divided out to be, so it'd be less than the 2,500 originally.
Yeah, but it's not going to be equal, like he said, the smaller cities are doing 500. So if we said up to 2,000?
Oh, yeah, you should be able to...
That would easily cover our part.
And it could be less than that, once I get the ones finalized. And we've, yeah, we're going to go ahead and cut the check ourselves
Yes.
because it's a done deal. We've already signed the contract, we're going to do it. So we're just trying to spread the cost between our partners, and I think everyone's going to benefit from this.
Yes, I think $2,000 for the city of Scottsboro for the benefit would be a great deal.
It's going to be a great tool, and once the study is out, you will have this, you will have a copy of the study.
Okay.
So everybody, all of our partners will have a copy of that study.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on that? If not, we'll put that on the 18th meeting.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Number six, discuss sponsorship request for the Airport Marine High School Fishing Trail. This is February of 2022. Ms. Kirkland?
So the Airport Marine High School Fishing Trail contacted me. They are out of Alabaster, Alabama, and they are a boat dealer that puts on this high school tournament. And the tournament would be February 26th and 27th of 2022. They're asking for $3,000 from us as a host fee. It's a 150-boat tournament for high school kids, so high school teams can compete. Most of them will stay in hotels at least one day before the tournament, since they are driving from across the state, and they also will bring their families to watch them. So that's kind of the breakdown of that tournament. I can provide the contract to you if you guys would like to see it or have any specific questions.
Anyone have any questions on this? Of course, if it is approved, it would come out of our tourism grant. So no one has any questions, we'll put that on the 18th meeting also. Number seven, discuss sponsorship request for the Southern All-Star Catfish Series. That's a fishing tournament also.
So they reached out to me as well. So they are based out of Dothan, and they are actually starting a new leg of the American Catfish Association. So this is something that hasn't been done in Alabama before, but they see a market for it. And we would, if we decided to go with this tournament, we would be the second catfish tournament in the state of Alabama in 2022. The first one would be in Decatur off of their boat dock or boat ramp. It is May 14th of 2022. They're asking for $5,500. $5,000 would be a host fee, and then they do a $500 lodging incentive, so it's like two $250 giveaways for any of the anglers. It's a 100-boat tournament, but it is up to three anglers per boat. That's how catfishing tournaments are done, so there's a potential to have up to 300 anglers. And also with catfishing tournaments, they are allowed to practice for at least five days before the tournament in the body of water. So there's a potential that they would all stay in our hotels for at least a week before the tournament. Do you guys have any questions about that?
Anyone have any questions on that? Of course, that would be the same as the other tourism grant money, if approved. No questions, we'll move that to the 18th meeting also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight, discuss HVAC repair, replacement, the... Number eight, discuss HVAC repair replacement to RecCom. Mr. Wood?
Having a bit of deja vu right now. You know, one of our units went down a few weeks back. But the one over our multipurpose room, which is where our Zumba class goes. So right now, they're misplaced a little bit. They have space to do their class, but they do enjoy doing it there at the, in that first room and the multipurpose room. The repair quote from Central Air was $2,713. That includes the labor to do that. It's just to replace the compressor. So it's about half the price of what the brand-new unit would be. So it's sort of a preference then how y'all want to proceed.
Talked with the mayor about this earlier. I think the best way to move forward on this is to get bids first to replace the unit. And then once we have bids, we'll know kind of the difference between replacing and the cost to repair. And then we can move forward from there. Anyone else have any suggestions?
So this number came as a result of a repair bid?
Yes.
And so like he said, if it's going to be just double to replace the whole thing, suggestion. Could you give me, yeah, could you give me the age on them? Do you know that offhand?
They're both, the one we just replaced was 12-years-old. This one is, dang, I don't have that with me, but I do have it on my desk. But it is approximately the same age. They're both over 10-years-old.
So to move forward, as far as the bid, we'll have to vote on that, the bid out first.
You can direct the mayor to see bids.
Okay.